Everything on the back of a business card. You didn't want to have to write everything on the back of a business card.
Okay, let's go ahead and get started tonight, council. I want to appreciate the public being here with us tonight. Appreciate you guys showing up. So, let's go ahead and stand for the prayer and the pledge of allegiance to the flag.
Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. Thank you for all your blessings that you bestow upon us. Thank you for, you know, everyone here in this county. And thank you for the love and compassion that you give us. Father, thank you for all of our county employees, our council, and just, you know, all the wonderful things you do for us. Please be with us as we go about our days, and may we see your light shine throughout our daily interactions with each other and just in our lives. So, Jesus most precious and holy name, we pray. Amen.
A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which extends, one nation under God, indivisible, with no bounds, justice for all.
Okay, okay, thank you. Okay, let's get started here. Tonight's agenda, council has the agenda before them on the, for tonight. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda?
Mr. President, I'd like to add a new item eight before the county manager's report. A letter of support for legislation, in this case Senate Bill 302, Talbot County Board of Education Election of Officers.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
I would so move.
Okay, I got a motion. Okay, I got a motion second to go ahead and put Bill 302 on the agenda for tonight. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hay?
Aye.
That's great, okay. Anything else? Good? Okay, all right, so let's move on to the minutes of February 28th. Council has had time to take a look at that. Are there any additions, deletions, or corrections to the minutes? Nope? Okay. Hearing none, the chair moves that the minutes be accepted as unanimous consent. Okay. Moving on, on the agenda, the next is the dispersments of March 7th and March 14th. We've had time to review all that, so are there any delete, deletions, corrections, or to the dispersments, additions, I'm sorry, additions, deletions, or corrections to the dispersments? I'm sorry, sorry.
Yeah, that was fingers going all over the place on that one, you know, nothing.
Okay, good, okay. Hearing none, the chair moves that we accept as unanimous consent. Okay, all right, I got all through that. All right, next up, I'm gonna really need my right-hand man here. We got a proclamation.
For endometriosis awareness month.
There we go. See, I wanted to help you on that one. Okay, all right, would you like to come on up? Yes. We support this every year.
Yes, we do.
Glad to support that. Everybody, tell everybody about it.
Okay. My name is Shannon Hinder-Hannawald, and I always make sure to put my maiden name in there because that's who and where I was when I started this journey. I draw strength from it because everyone always says I'm stubborn, and I know I get that from my grandparents. They worked hard, loved hard, and supported hard. When I need the strength to fight this disease and advocate for others, I always come back to how strong, stubborn, and resilient they were, and it gives me the strength and courage to continue doing what needs to be done to bring awareness to this disease. Endometriosis is the disease that affects all aspects of your life. Emotionally, mentally, and physically, endometriosis can take everything from you, and it did to me until I decided it was time to fight back for awareness, education, and support so that generations after me do not have to go through what I and so many other women have. Endo is a whole-body disease, and while the last two years I have focused more on the physical side of things such as infertility, excruciating pain, and other immune disorders that are common with endo, I have decided to bring more awareness to how this disease affects you emotionally and mentally this year. My pain started when I was 15 years old and started as a doctor saying I had ovarian cyst rupturing. After that, my pain just increased and the help and the knowledge from the doctors decreased. My parents took me to so many doctors, I had more CT scans and ultrasounds than I can count, all coming back with the result of nothing. How is that possible? I was in excruciating debilitating pain that nobody could seem to help me with. My parents started to believe the doctors that I was just trying to get out of school. And honestly, when I look back on it now, they didn't really have a choice. I had severe depression and anxiety because nobody would listen or help me. I felt alone and dismissed by everyone, and I didn't know what I was going to do. The feeling of being dismissed and made out for people to think you were lying is a feeling I would not wish on anyone. They are feelings that I long ago buried and tried not to allow them back into my life, but I know in doing this mission, I have to be completely honest and brutal if needed so our family, friends, coworkers, and even acquaintances can understand the feeling they share when you look perfectly healthy on the outside. When I was 17, I was at a point where I didn't want to live anymore. I was alone, tired, in pain physically and emotionally, and I was done. I was a shell of myself, going through the motions every day. Having the people who were supposed to protect and help me think I was lying about how I felt was so defeating and crushing to every part of me. I decided one night I was done. I went and I got one of my prescriptions, and I took every last pill in the bottle. My mom just happened to walk in and saw what I had done, and she called 911. At the moment I decided to swallow all those pills, I didn't really have any feelings. I didn't think about how what I was doing would affect anyone else. At that point, all I really thought was, I can't keep doing this. Nobody believes me, I'm scared, and I'm tired of fighting. Maybe it was in my head, maybe there really wasn't anything wrong. After that night, my perspective changed. I don't know why, and I don't know how, but I decided I was going to fight. I was going to figure out what was wrong with me, and I wasn't going to let anyone else feel the way that I did for the past two years. Nobody should want to take their own life because of how other people make you feel. It took me a long time to be able to let that anger and hurt go towards my family, but I realized they didn't have a choice but to think I was lying because every test came back fine. After five years, I finally found a doctor that would listen to me, and as soon as I told him my symptoms, he said, I'm certain you have endometriosis. Endometriosis, what was that and why had nobody else even mentioned this to me or my parents? The only way to diagnose endometriosis is through laparoscopic surgery. No blood work, no ultrasounds, no MRIs, no CT scans, just surgery. We scheduled my surgery, and sure enough, I had stage four endometriosis. That was the first of my 14 surgeries to try and help remove the lesions to help with the pain. The next obstacle was infertility. Growing up, you don't think about not being able to have children because that's just something that women do, but that wasn't the case. Knowing something was wrong with me and could prevent me from being one of the things I wanted most in this world, and that was to be a mom. The mental impact it has on you is debilitating. I felt not normal, damaged, and discouraged because nobody would want to marry me if I couldn't have children. Unfortunately, there are women who lose this mental battle with themselves over this disease. Many women have committed suicide because of the impact endometriosis has not just on you physically but mentally as well. It takes an average of 10 years to receive a diagnosis of endometriosis. Endometriosis has taken so much from me. I've missed important dates and celebrations with family and friends. It took away my ability to have children like other women. It took a baby from me during fertility treatments, a baby that was loved and dreamt of. It is still a continuous battle for me daily. I'm not the mom or wife that I want to be all the time. The guilt of not always being present partner for my husband or the full-time hands-on mom I want to be. The guilt I have when I have to cancel plans with my family or playdates for my children will probably never end, but I will always remind myself they still love and support me even when I don't. My mission is to change this. We need people to listen and understand when we talk about how we feel. We need to not be made to feel guilty because we have to cancel plans, miss time from work, or because we spend more time at the doctor than most. The more we talk about endometriosis, the more women and their families will know they are not alone in this fight. It will hopefully give them the courage and strength to fight for themselves, not just physically but mentally and emotionally as well. I want the word endometriosis to be known as well as if someone says they have an ear infection or strep throat. I know some women do not want to speak publicly about a disease that is so personal, so I will speak for them. Endometriosis has no cure, only treatments. Some doctors will say to have a hysterectomy, but that does not stop it from growing in other organs. It has now been found, not just on pelvic organs, but on the brain as well. It is imperative that we all work together and support each other through this journey. My passion and driver because I don't want anyone to go through what I have, but I have chosen to fight because you never know who is watching and learning from you. I always go back to the quote, God grant me the serenity to accept the things I cannot change, the courage to change the things I can, and the wisdom to know the difference. I ask you to remember, just because someone looks okay on the outside doesn't mean that they are okay on the inside. If someone says they have endo, please remember this point in time, and hopefully you can understand how they feel. Endometriosis affects each of us differently. It is a complex disease that requires numerous specialists for each patient. There are no two stories that are the same. I want to thank you guys. I started this three years ago. One of my nieces went to the doctor, and they started dismissing her, and I decided that that was it, and I wasn't going to put up with it. And you guys have supported me the past three years, so I'm very grateful for that, and I, I, thank you doesn't even come close to explaining how grateful I am that you guys have supported me through all of that, so thank you.
And I want to add to that, Shannon, that, that it's been a pleasure knowing you and being in here every year, and I'm so proud of you bringing that information to the public and coming out of your shell, and it means, it, it has to mean a lot for you. You're, you're an inspiration to a lot of women, that's for sure. And we're so glad to support you, and, and council, you got any?
No, Shannon, thank you just for, for being here, sharing your story. It's, it's more than touching. The one thing you said that really stands out is just being a voice for those who, you know, feel like they don't have one. And just thank you for doing that. I have the courage to do so.
Thank you.
Yeah. Thank you for your work on behalf of other victims of this, of this condition.
Thank you for your support of others who are going through it and sharing your story with them.
And I echo that. Thank you for sharing your story.
Thanks so much, and we got you a proclamation up here.
Hey, guys, let's, let's stand up here. Would you like, would you like Madam Secretary to read the proclamation?
Yes.
Is the council president? Would you like, would you like Madam Secretary to read the proclamation?
Get this into the record first. Get all excited out of the war here, you know? Yeah.
Proclamation Endometriosis Awareness Month, March 2023. Whereas endometriosis is a disease affecting at least one in 10 women of reproductive age whereby the endometrium, a type of tissue that normally grows in the uterus, also grows outside the uterus, and whereas many of the estimated 200 million women worldwide who have endometriosis live with debilitating chronic pain and fatigue, an average experiencing a delay of up to 10 years between the first symptoms and diagnosis, with between 30% to 50% experiencing infertility. And whereas although endometriosis can affect every organ of the body, even the eyes and brain, at the present time, the disease can only be definitively diagnosed via laparoscopic surgical procedure, and healthcare providers must focus on managing the symptoms of the disease with various treatments. And whereas, the first worldwide endometriosis march took place in 2014 with events held in more than 40 countries, and by 2018, 63 countries around the world were participating in the annual event which has been sponsored by the American Medical Association, the American College of Obstetricians and Gynecologists, the American Society for Reproductive Medicine, the Society of Laproendoscopic Surgeons, the International Federation of Gynecology and Obstetrics, and the European Society of Human Reproduction and Embryology. And whereas, there is a need for further research and increased funding for research of endometriosis, which would hopefully lead to earlier detection, this discovery of the cause of the disease, a reliable, less invasive, and less costly way to diagnose the disease, more effective ways to manage symptoms, and a cure. Now therefore, we, the county council of Talbot County, do hereby proclaim March 2023 as Endometriosis Awareness Month in Talbot County, and urge all citizens to help increase awareness of endometriosis and the importance of diagnosing this disease which to date has no known cure, given under our hands and the great seal of Talbot County this 14th day of March in the year of our Lord 2023.
Great job. Is there a motion to approve the proclamation?
I shall move.
Okay. Okay, we got a motion second, Madam Secretary, to approve the proclamation. Could you call the vote, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hay?
Aye.
There we go. Okay, now, now that we've adopted, we're all ready here.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Absolutely. Thank you. Thank you.
I'll tell you what, I'd have been weeks getting, doing that, you know? Man, she was good. Okay, all right. Madam Secretary, okay, we've got introduction of number resolution. Do you want to go ahead and read that, please? That'd be great.
First one is a resolution to amend the Talbot County Comprehensive Water and Sewer Plan to reclassify and remap certain real properties in and around the villages of Barneck and Fairbank from unprogrammed to S1, immediate priority status for sewer service from the Region 5 Tillman wastewater system.
Okay, Ray, you want to come on up? Okay. You want to go, go ahead and tell, tell us something?
We've been working, I think, with citizens both in Barneck and Fairbank on this, trying to extend sewer from the Region 5 wastewater treatment plan. I will just say from my historical perspective, I mean, sewer, I guess, was looked at to try and get sewer to Fairbanks since 1992, was incorporated in the 1992 as a priority area for sewer. So, we're working now to try and, you know, secure funding for that. We worked with the council, I think, in previous years, basically adopting capital bills within the comprehensive sewer plan, as well as establishing the capital bill for this project. So, we're now in the process of having to update the comprehensive sewer plan to basically reclassify this as immediate priority status. We are in the process of seeking funding through the Department of the Environment, through the Water Quality Infrastructure Management Program, and that funding hopefully will be available to us probably within the next year or so, so that's.
Okay, that's great. That's good. Mr. Thomas, you want to add anything, or?
No, I believe Mr. Clark covered it.
You're good? Okay, all right, good. So, Madam Secretary, you want to, do we want to raise the hands to?
However you want to do it.
For, for, for those who are responsible for this?
Yeah, yeah.
So, by Callahan, Milkie, Lusher, and Step?
Uh huh. You okay, Keesha?
Yeah.
Yep, we're raising our hand.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
By, by the full council.
All right, no prob, no problem. Madam Secretary, you want to go ahead and announce the number and the date and time?
Yes, this will be known as Resolution Number 339, and the public hearing will be on Tuesday, April 11th at 6:30 PM.
Okay, that's great. Okay, I appreciate that. Okay, you want to go ahead and read the next one, if you would, please?
A resolution to formally accept the offer from Trips Creek LLC to dedicate Jennings Road to public use as a public county road, said road being more particularly shown and designated as Jennings Road, 50 feet, 50-foot public right-of-way on a plat entitled Lotline Abandonment and Final Subdivision Plat and FCP 2001-08 Swanegar Farm at Cook's Hope in the 1st Election District, Talbot County, Maryland, Tax Map 42, Grids 16 and 22, Parcel 721215, dated April 22nd, 2002, revised through September 5th, 2006, and recorded among the plat records of Talbot County, Maryland in Library MAS Number 82, Page 42, and to accept fee simple title to the same for no consideration.
Okay.
And again, this is a resolution, we've, the road's been constructed at the same time, we have tried to work with the previous county attorneys, I'm sorry, it unfortunately fell through the cracks, but this is, again, was constructed about 15 years ago, and we're trying, you know, working with Patrick, we're trying to move forward with the county taking this over.
That's great. Mr. Thomas, you want, you want to add to this?
Yes, and this was actually requested by Trips Creek LLC for the county to take this, to formally accept this road as the county's been maintaining it for over 15 years, and the county code authorizes the county to accept roads by resolution, by adoption of a resolution.
Okay, great, I appreciate that. Mr. Lusher?
And Mr. Clark, we have some information in our packet about this, but for the public, this road is in fact built to county standards?
That is correct. It was built to county standards about 15 years ago. Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Okay. Okay, anybody else? Any council? Okay, so, want to show, raise a hands for introduction?
For, for introduction.
Introduction, yeah.
So, by council?
This will be known as Resolution Number 340, and the public hearing will be on Tuesday, April 11th at 6:30 PM.
Okay, that's great. Okay, next on the agenda is introduction of legislation.
A bill to amend Chapter 190 of the Talbot County Code, Zoning, Subdivision, and Land Development, Sections 190-15, Critical Area Overlay, 190-25.2, Table of Land Uses, 190-31, Marine Uses, 190-33, Accessory Uses, 190-50, Nonconforming Structures, 190-58.2, Minor Variances, and 190-78, Terms Defined Regarding Erosion Control Measures, Piers, and Repairian Structures.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Thomas, you want to go ahead and tell us a little bit about that?
Sure, so this is a zoning text amendment that was requested in 2022 by Ryan Showalter on behalf of his clients. This originally came, as zoning text amendments do, came before the council, the previous council, and they voted to move it forward, so it went to the planning commission. They reviewed this in, in January, and made a favorable recommendation for the council, and so now it's come back before the council to, for introduction. And, and Mr. Showalter is here in the audience, he may wish to speak a little bit about it. Mr. Tarleton is here as well, he may, they've been involved in some of the history of this.
I got you, okay. Would you like to come on up, Mr. Showalter? There you go. There you go. Come on up, Ryan.
Members of the council, thank you very much. I'm appearing on behalf of Weems Brothers, a marine contractor based in the county, and this has been a.
Can you tell, can you tell the public who you are?
I'm sorry, for the record, Ryan Showalter, 100 Northwest Street East in Maryland. This has been an effort that, that has truly taken several years. This started with, with Mary Kay, when we approached her to identify, we identified and approached her to clean up some, some gaps or some inconsistencies in the county code that dealt with marine structures. The county zoning staff had some text amendments on their list that they had identified in applying the county regulations, and, and it sort of grew to become a, an omnibus, if you will, marine structure cleanup. And so, we worked with Mary Kay, it then transitioned to Miguel when he was the county planner, and then, and then to Brennan. This has appeared before the county planning commission, I think, for three different, over three different meetings. They had a lot of feedback, and we addressed their comments. So, this is sort of a wholesale approach to tweak and catch and clean up a number of issues in the county code. a number of issues in the county code. The one material change that is, that I would characterize as a substantive difference is the county right now does not permit piers to be constructed on parcels that are not improved by a principal dwelling. And, and that is proposed to be changed by this code. So if you own a waterfront lot and you pay taxes on the waterfront lot, this would allow those, those unimproved lots to have a pier, so people could exercise the repair and rights that state law provides them. Otherwise, I would characterize the revisions as principally minor modifications to conform to state law or clean up gaps or inconsistencies.
Okay, that's great. Good questions. All right, thank you, Ryan, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Brennan, do you want to add anything to this, or?
Nothing to really add, but I just wanted to-
You just wanted to come up here, right?
Yeah, I just wanted to come up.
I got you.
Brennan Tarleton, Department of Planning and Zoning. Just to add, on behalf of the Planning Commission, they did review the application in their July 2022 meeting. Thereafter, again, after an extensive review with the applicant, went through, made some revisions. The applicant then worked with staff to go over those revisions, and that was presented to the Planning Commission again in their December 2022 meeting, and then finally recommended unanimously to you all for consideration of introduction and approval in the January 2023 meeting. Ryan noted some of the changes in there, but I just wanted to make myself available if you all had any questions about the current language as it exists with regards to repairing structures, shoreline stabilization or piers, and what effects potentially that this language would have on those current standards.
Okay, all right, great.
Thank you.
All right, appreciate it. Okay, being that's all said, go ahead, yeah, sure.
Just if you don't mind, Brennan, real quick. So would that apply, and maybe Brennan or Ryan, would that apply to parcels that are, you said, that are non-improved but taxed? Would that also apply to parcels that are non-improved and non-taxed as well? I do know we have some of those in the county.
Right, so I think the way the language reads today in that proposed change is that if it's a legal conforming lot of record that meets all of our standard requirements, i.e. minimum lot size, minimum lot width, and things of that nature, and could potentially have a house built on it in the future, there are certain standards and criteria you have to meet for allowing for the construction of a pier on that property. And it also allows for legal nonconforming lots of record that don't comply to those standards, whether it be lot size or lot width, to also erect a pier on the property. So I'm not certain that really addresses the concerns related to taxable and non-taxable properties.
But if it's a property of record, that would comply?
Yes.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, all right, good. Any other questions?
No.
Okay, about as good, okay, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Okay, at this time, going to show a hands to introduce the bill?
So by council?
This will be known as Bill Number 1528, and the public hearing will be held on Tuesday, April 11th at 6:30 PM.
Okay, that sounds great. Okay, next on the agenda is, we have a bill in front of us. Mr. Lusher, you want to?
So-
Let us know what 302 is.
Senate, Senate Bill 302. This has come in as a request from Senator Mouts, and it has to do with the, strictly the timing of the election of officers for the Talbot County Board of Education. It affects only Talbot County, it affects only the Board of Education. And currently, they elect their officers in January, and this would, and, and this is, they don't get to do this on their own, this is spelled out in state law. This state law will change, will allow them to elect their officers in December to get, get things rolling a little bit earlier. The council supported a similar bill in last year's legislative session. It did not make it through in the final rush. This one has actually made it through to the, to the third reader in the Senate. And, and again, Senator Mouts has requested our support with these local bills essentially. Typically, they, they don't move forward without an indication of locals, of support from the local jurisdiction.
Correct, correct, okay.
Any other council member like to speak?
Okay, go, go ahead.
If I could, and just as a matter of public record, I'd like to make, make it clear that this does not affect, you know, the ability of our citizens to elect their Board of, Board of, I'm sorry, Board of Education members. This is only their internal election of both their president and vice president. That was a question that I had, so I wanted to make sure we got that as part of the record.
That's, that's a good point, I appreciate that. Okay, do we need a motion?
I, I will move to issue, that we issue this letter of support.
Okay, do you have a second?
Okay.
Okay, Madam Secretary, we have a motion second to move this forward with a recommenda, a, a letter of recommendation on 302. Could you call the vote, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hayth?
Aye.
Okay, all right, that sounds good, okay. Mr. Stamp, you're, you're, you're up.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Counsel, I have under boards and committee vacancies. First, I have a request, or we're requesting the appointment of Kevin Moran to represent the business community on the Agricultural Resolution Board.
I will move to, I will move the appointment.
Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion second to put Kevin Moran on the, what, what board is it?
This would be the Agricultural-
Agricultural Board.
Resolution Board.
There you go, okay. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hayth?
Aye.
Next, under Board and Committee request, we're, Economic Development Commission, we're requesting the appointment of Mr. Al Bond as an ex officio representative of the arts on the Economic Development Commission. This is a recommendation from the Economic Development Commission.
Okay.
I move the appointment.
Second.
And we got a motion second to put Al Bond on, on the Economic Development Board. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hayth?
Aye.
The next item I have is a request from the Bellevue Passage Museum for a letter of support to the Maryland Historic Trust Grant. As you read in your packet, Dr. De Shields is requesting a letter of support for the Bellevue Passage Museum's application to the Maryland Historic Trust for grant funds to renovate the John U. Green Store, Store to house the museum. No county funds are required, and again, requesting the county's support for this.
Okay.
I'll move for the letter of support.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second to support, a support letter to the Bellevue Museum. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hayth?
Aye.
So next, I'll ask Ray Clark, your county engineer, to come forward. We have a request from the Department of Public Works to award bid number 2208 on the open-ended architectural engineering services, recommend the award of design services for the county's public safety complex on Mary's Court. As you read in your agenda packet, the Department of Public Works is requesting council approval of the award architectural design services for the county's public safety complex located on Mary Court in Easton to Davis Bowen and Friddell Incorporated in the amount of $246,650. There are sufficient funds in the budget, and Ray Clark can add any additional information or answer any questions.
This is basically, again, we worked with the council previously to have a hundred thousand dollars awarded. The total contract amount is $346,500. This is associated with the EMS, relocating the EMS facility as well as the sheriff at Mary's Court. This is also going to be designing the interior walls for both the sheriff as well as EMS, and then ultimately the Sally Port. We'll be adding the Sally Port, and then ultimately an addition for EMS. As part of all of this, it's also going to be having to deal with the HVAC systems and upgrading those systems to basically address the needs for EMS, and as well as their bringing natural gas into the facility for emergency generator and whatnot.
Okay, that's good.
And this is exciting for the public safety community, and we hope to, we hope to put this out to bid, get permission, put this out to bid in June.
Yes.
We can move it.
Mr. Stamp, would you mind telling the public the first floor and the second floor?
Absolutely. So this is exciting for the sheriff's office as, as well as emergency services. Council acquired the building on Mary's Court that used to be the Avon Dixon Building, and has taken possession of that building. The first floor will be the sheriff's office, entire first floor. There will be an addition placed on that building for what's called a Sally Port that allows them to drive those that are incarcerated in and probably process them. On the second floor will, will be the future 911 Center for Talbot County, and it will house the administrative offices of the Department of Emergency Services and be the county's emergency operations center. So it's exciting for, again, the public safety community and-
It is, it is, yeah, thank you. I just want to make sure everybody sort of understood that, because that's, that, that is something that past council and this council, it, it's really, a really big deal to Talbot County and for the future of Talbot County. So, being that said, thank you, Mr. Clark. Is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay, second? Okay, we got a motion second to award bid 2208 to go ahead and start doing the architectural review on that building so we can get started on, on stuff.
Chuck, I had one question. I had one question.
Yeah, sure, go ahead, I'm sorry.
Ray, is there any contingency built into this contract?
I mean, as far as the overall, I think right now, the, the way I understand it, there's, I think, roughly about $12 million has been appropriated within the bond that's been, I guess, issued on this. My understanding, six million was associated with the purchase of the property. At this point, I think, you know, in working on all this, what we're going to probably end up doing is having to do the interior walls first as a kind of a phase one. At that point, we're trying to get the sheriff out of the, I guess, the old Black and Decker building, or, you know, and moved into this facility, probably by, let's say, the summer of next year. So that's the intent. And then I think if we do run into a situation, we'd have to come back to the county council if there was a need for funding, but at this point in time, I think we should be okay. We are trying to, we're trying to do this in phases. I think we have looked at a couple components. We have kind of phases one, two, and three. Phase three is to build like a pole barn building with additional storage, and that may not be, we may not be able to do that at this point.
Okay, I know just sometimes architectural services may go over the-
Yeah, the good, the good news, the good news I would say is we did, we did a, kind of a space needs analysis with Davis Bowen Friddell, worked with the sheriff's office as well as EMS. They've also done the floor plan layout, so now we're in the process of just having Davis Bowen Friddell set up the floor plans, and then get that into the town of Easton for the building permits. And then I think one thing we've been talking, try to help expedite this, is possibly after we get a contractor on board for doing phase one, evaluate if there's a way to utilize that contractor for phase two and possibly move into a design build concept.
Thank you.
That's good, good, thank you, good question. Okay, I think there was a motion second, Madam Secretary, could you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hayth?
Aye.
Okay, good, good job, Ray.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ray.
Thank you.
Next, I'd ask Cassandra Van Hoosier to come up. You're Director of Economic Development and Tourism. She has a recommendation to award phase two of the Frederick Douglass Park on the Tuckahoe. As you read in your agenda packet, the Department of Economic Development, Tourism Department, and the Department of Parks and Recreation, and the Frederick Douglass Park on the Tuckahoe Committee are recommending the award of phase two of the Frederick Douglass Park on the Tuckahoe to LSG Landscape Architecture in the amount of $291,881.30. LSG completed the master plan and interpretive plan for the park. Funding for the project is through a $300,000 grant from Maryland Rural Economic Development Fund, and Cassandra is here to add any other information and answer questions relative to this exciting project.
It is exciting, and you said a whole lot there. I don't think I have a whole lot to add. I just want to stress that our committee, we have a council-appointed advisory committee for the development of the Frederick Douglass Park on the Tuckahoe. We have reconvened in our meeting the second Monday of every month for the next two years. This is a two-year project. The timeline, which was in your packet, I think is fifty-eight weeks, something like that. So it's going to take a good long time to finish this project, but we're really excited about this next phase. It's what's laid out in the master plan, and LSG Landscape Architecture and their subcontractors are the team that completed the master plan, and we feel that it will save time and money if we award the contract to them in a sole source procurement format. So I have researched that, and I feel confident that we're within reason on that. So, and that is the recommendation of the committee, of Preston and myself.
Okay, that sounds great. Any questions from council?
Yep.
Okay, we're all good? Okay, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion second to go ahead and start phase two of the Frederick Douglass Project. Madam Secretary, could you call the vote, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hayth?
Aye.
Okay, good job.
Thank you, council. I'd also like to mention, we're hosting a public meeting tomorrow at the Community Center for the All-American, Chesapeake Country All-American Road. Talbot County is hosting the mid-shores version of that. There's one today in Salisbury and one tomorrow in Talbot County, and then Kalina the next day. So everyone who's listening, who might be interested in helping work on the interpretive plan for the Chesapeake Country All-American Road, tomorrow's the day in Talbot County. So I just wanted to make sure that you're invited.
Okay, appreciate it. Thanks a lot, Cassandra, good job.
And the final item I have, council, you may recall that representatives from Delmarva Community Services, Delmarva Community Transport came in, and they provided you with a proposed, we call it the Transit Development Plan for Caroline Kenton Talbot County. Talbot County serves as a lead for that coalition. We did contact those two counties, they were supportive of our, of our moving forward with the plan. So you have a request to approve the plan that was submitted by the Delmarva Community Services for Caroline Kenton Talbot Counties, prepared by the KFH Group.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Lusher.
I, I, we've been over this, we've, we've, we heard from, we heard from, from Delmarva Community Transit back in, in, in January about this. We, we took time to ensure that there's buy-in from our, our partners in this, in, in the other counties, and I think I'm satisfied with, with, with the process that we've been through on this, so I'll move approval of that transit development plan.
Okay, thank you.
I'll second.
Okay, all right, we got a motion and a second to go ahead and approve the plan for Delmarva Community Service. Madam Secretary, could you go ahead and call the vote, please?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Aye.
Ms. Hayth?
Aye.
And council, that completes your county manager report for this week, thank you.
Okay, thank you. All right, Jess, we got public comment? Do we have, do we have a sheet or anything? Nobody, nobody's out there just rushing to get in? No, okay. Nothing? Come on, come on, you got something for us, you know? Nothing? Yeah, there you go, there you go. I knew it, I knew it. Okay, now, thirty seconds.
Yes. Hello, Terrance Bernard?
Yeah, yeah.
I've been a motorcycle and two-wheel enthusiast since 1969. And there are some, I've done a hundred mile bike rides for benefit rides here in the year 2000 for a couple of years. But I've been noticing at some intersection, I know there's state and county, city roads, just be aware whenever they get back up on road repairs that these cracks out there can hamper the front wheel of a bicycle or motorcycle during the evening or these peculiar weather days, that's all. Example, going from Lowe's, shooting across the bypass to the Star Democrat, bypass to, uh, the Star Democrat, there's a pretty good crack right there.
Okay.
Foot and a half so forth, and it's just the odds that it can happen. And when, of course, you're a licensed driver, you don't drive while you're inebriated, and, uh, you're conscious, you didn't leave an argument somewhere and get on the bicycle or motorcycle to go somewhere, or going out on a date or somewhere, you gotta get there, kids late for school or something. But these, you know, that's where accidents come in.
Okay, well, thank you.
That's all, just awareness.
Okay. All right, I appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, anybody else? Nick, you want to say anything over there?
I'm good.
You're good. Okay, okay, good. Well, we want to include you, that's for sure. All right, okay, so, um, okay. So, uh, next we council comments, um.
Mr. Step?
Yeah.
All right.
Let's sort it that way.
Um, thank you, Patrick. So, um, obviously, we are in the throes of budget season. Uh, being the first time going through this, I certainly see the large amount of work that goes into it. So, so Clay, Jess, Susan, um, wanted to call everyone. I miss Karen as well, uh, as, as well as Martha and Caitlin. I know they've put in significant amount of time, uh, in addition to all of our county leaders and those who are, were a part of putting you in the packet for us to make, uh, quite an important decision on behalf of the county and all of our residents. So, I just wanted to send a heartfelt thanks out for that, as well as say that, uh, it was, uh, although it was very cold, it was great to be with, uh, with council today, as well as a lot, a lot of our, uh, other leaders throughout the county, uh, as we put the golden shovels on the ground for the, uh, gym improvement, uh, out to the community center, which is going to house, keep me honest with you, council, two basketball courts or three volleyball courts.
Correct.
So, will be a, uh, incredible, uh, addition to our, uh, to our, to our county. So, uh, great things out to happen out there as we see, uh, as we see the dirt starting to get moved. So, that's all I have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Lusher?
Nothing further tonight.
Good. Okay.
I have two comments.
That's good.
I'll take his turn.
Okay.
Um, first, um, I would like to recognize, since this is Women's History Month, um, the American Association of University Women, who has had a presence on the shore since nineteen fifty-eight. They are sponsoring a book and jewelry sale, um, on Friday, March seventeenth, and Saturday, March eighteenth, nine A. M. to five P. M. on Friday, and nine A. M. to three on Saturday at Christ Church. Um, the money that they obtain from the sale, and they've done this for many years, uh, will help fund education grants for women twenty-five and over pursuing higher education. So, I highly support, um, that group. Um, second, um, today was the first meeting of the Talbot County Drug and Alcohol Abuse Council since the pandemic began. The council is made up of judges, state's attorneys, social services, county manager, Mr. Step, myself, um, and others, um, to report on the trends and issues, uh, related to substance abuse and mental health issues facing Talbot County. Um, the, the council has a subcommittee that is working, the, not our council, but their council, has a subcommittee that's working on recommendations on opioid prevention, treatment, and recovery systems in Talbot County to make appropriate recommendations to the, to our council. Um, we hope that we will, they will have a report in the next month or so, um, and we'll be presenting the group's recommendations. Uh, we are hopeful that the recommendations will strengthen, uh, the, the county's ability to better prevent substance abuse and better serve those impacted.
Okay. All right, good job. Good job. Yep, Mrs. Haye?
Okay, so, um, just want to thank Preston and his team, um, for doing a great job on the groundbreaking, and, um, council's office as well for organizing that. Um, so, echo what Dave said. Um, also want to, uh, remind the public, or if they're, they are not aware, that there is a Neighborhood Service Center breakfast. Um, I believe it's next Tuesday, the twenty-first. Is that right, Jessica?
Twenty-first.
Twenty-first. Um, and it starts at seven thirty A. M. in the morning at the Tidewater Inn. So, if you have not purchased your tickets for that, please, um, do so. And then, Happy St. Patrick's Day on Friday to everyone.
There we go. Okay, thank you. And I'll just, um, piggyback on what, uh, Mr. Step said about today's, um, you know, out there to the Hog Neck and, um, not Hog Neck, oh, God, my mind went-
We all call Hog-
Yeah, yeah, sorry, sorry. Community Center, yes. Um, that, that's such, that's such a, a big deal in the making for the last, you know, ten to twelve years, and, um, it really is big for Talbot County. Um, it's going to be twenty thousand square feet, so we have a lot of people, has a lot of hands in that, um, to make that stuff happen. And I want to, um, I, I really want to thank the public, too, um, you know, for being patient with us. Um, we're going to probably have one of the best facilities, you know, in the surrounding areas on the mid-shore between, you know, the basketball courts, the volleyball, volleyball, baseball, and ice hockey. So, we're really building revenue for people, and pickleball.
Pickleball.
Yeah, that's big time.
Hockey girls.
Yep, yep, exactly. So, I just, I just really want the, the public to know how big a deal that is, and, you know, we're going to break ground in a couple of weeks. So, you know, this facility is going to be up and running big time here in the next, um, what was the construction? Was it six months?
Nine months.
Not nine months. Okay, nine months. So, um, you know, towards the, towards the end of the year, we're really going to have something special around here, that's for sure. So, being that said, um, Mr. Lusher?
The county council's next meeting will be held on Tuesday, March twenty-eighth, beginning at six o'clock P. M. The council will be convening an open session at four thirty P. M. and then adjourning into closed session to discuss real estate, legal, and personnel matters as listed on the statement for closing that meeting. The county council will be holding budget deliberations on Thursday, March sixteenth, beginning at four thirty P. M., Tuesday, March twenty-first, at four o'clock P. M., and Thursday, March twenty-third, at four thirty P. M. Therefore, is there a motion to adjourn this meeting and reconvene as noted?
So moved.
Okay, we got a motion second. Madam Secretary, to adjourn. Um, can you call the vote?
Mr. Callahan?
Aye.
Mr. Step?
Aye.
Mr. Lusher?
Aye.
Ms. Milkie?
Uh, aye.
Ms. Haye?[1747.01]